I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber, here. Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley, here. Councillor Blackwell, here. Councillor Doyle. Here. And Councillor Pishaneri.
Here, thank you.
We have two items tonight for the work session. The first is the revised bike share proposal with Drew Larson.
year pilot bicycle share expansion that included the launch of 100 bicycles in a geographic area that ranged from South A Street to Centennial and essentially I five to Mohawk Boulevard. So quite a large area of town. The proposal included multiple bike share hubs with minimal bike share specific infrastructure. And while it seemed that council was interested in seeing bike share expand to Springfield, there were concerns regarding the number of bicycles deployed as well as the large geographic area proposed. In addition, council was specifically concerned with dedicated funding and Springfield's ongoing financial responsibility. So in response to last year's work session and continued desire from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Springfield staff has worked with regional partners, including the City of Eugene, Lane Transit District, and the operator Cascadia Mobility to address council's concerns and develop a revised three-year pilot proposal for the city council to consider this evening. First, I'd like to address council's concerns regarding the dedicated funding source and Springfield's ongoing financial responsibility. The Lane Transit District or LTD has signaled that they intend to play a larger role in funding, operations, and planning for regional mobility, including bike share through a planning effort called Reimagine the Ride that is currently underway. This planning effort is reimagining a transportation system that is more connected, sustainable, innovative, and equitable, and projected to be completed in 2025. So based on this planning effort, staff met with and confirmed with LTD staff that if Springfield Council is supportive of the proposal tonight and approves funding for the initial pilot year, that reimagine the ride would support a regional bike share program and that funding could be identified in 2025 to alleviate Springfield from any ongoing financial responsibility. However, any funding provided by LTD in the future must be approved by the LTD Board of Directors. So while it's not a hard yes tonight, the intent is LTD is moving in that direction and going to take that to their Board of Directors. In addition to LTD stated goals of reimagine the ride, the City of Eugene was awarded 600,000 in federal redistribution funds last year dedicated to an immediate bike share expansion. The expansion is planned this spring and looks to expand the existing area and deploy an additional 100 bicycles. This planned expansion is funded by rider revenue, sponsorship, City of Eugene, University of Oregon, and of course, those federal funds from last year. So when Springfield staff learned of this planned expansion and immediate dedicated funding source, we asked Eugene if the expansion and regional funds could include portions of Springfield. And at a meeting with Eugene and Cascadia Mobility, Eugene staff agreed that the awarded funding planned for the 2024 expansion again this spring could include portions of Springfield to start developing a regional bike share program pending city council approval. However, Eugene staff did need a financial commitment from the City of Springfield so that they weren't footing the whole bill for the regional bike share and have asked Springfield to provide funding for that. And I'll get into that here in the proposal here in just a second. The last of council's concerns revolved around installation, maintenance, and removal of bike share specific infrastructure. However, the new proposal that I will discuss here in a second will only utilize existing bike racks in downtown Springfield. So in the event that the program is deemed unsuccessful, no infrastructure would need to be removed and no added maintenance responsibilities to Springfield Operations Department. So for the proposal, like last year's proposal, staff is proposing a three-year pilot expansion, but with a reduced service area and a reduced number of bicycles deployed in Springfield to address council's concerns. The expansion is only proposed to cover downtown Springfield, ranging from Island Park to Seventh Street and South A to D Street, which can be seen in attachment two in my packet. The proposal also reduces the number of deployed bicycles to 25 in Springfield versus last year's proposal of 100. These 25 bicycles will represent 5.55% of the total existing fleet deployed with the expansion this year for a total of 450 bikes in the regional system. So that 5.55% is how we calculated the cost share for Springfield's portion for a one-year pilot expansion, which would be $16,558 to fund Springfield's portion of the cost share for one year of operation. Um, let's see here. So yep, that's, that was the simplest way that Eugene and Springfield staff could come up with. There's 450 total bikes. Eugene gets 25% of, or Springfield gets 25%, 25 dedicated to downtown Springfield, which is that 5.5% and the total operational cost is about $1 million with a budget shortfall of about 300,000. So 5.5% is about $16,558. Additional things that came up that for council to consider is the expansion of bike share in the City of Springfield meets many of the objectives of climate-friendly and equitable community administrative rules. Bike share can help the city meet, uh, city meet many of the desired outcomes of CFAC rules by reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. A BMT reduction, vehicle miles traveled may allow for the city to choose a project or projects to be included in the upcoming TSP that may increase BMT per capita that would result in an overall zero or a net zero increase. So bike share could offset new projects into the future. With that, there is one caveat. The state has yet to develop the methodology in which they're going to do this, but in conversations with DLCD, they were like, yes, this will help. We just haven't figured out how to, how to calculate it yet. Hopefully that will be soon, but that's, that's the answer I got from the state is that yes, it will help, but they're not quite sure how yet. Let's see here. Uh, we also wanted to touch on metrics of success. What would deem this project or this program successful in Springfield? While there's many studies that have been done and metrics established to measure success of more of a standalone bike share program similar to what Eugene launched, staff was unable to identify anything that's a 25 bike expansion of an existing system. So staff in consultation with Cascadia, Cascadia Mobility, uh, more of the experts in this, uh, recommends a three-year pilot expansion of the existing program, giving the community time to acclimate to the system and staff time to fully evaluate its impacts. Uh, the first year of operation would be used to gather data and establish a baseline to measure success using the following metrics, number of trips that begin and end in Springfield, as well as anecdotal data, downtown business owners and community feedback surveys. So in year two, these baseline numbers are expected to grow and will be tracked and compared to Eugene's initial launch and growth. And in year three, council could evaluate and discuss the numbers and community feedback to determine if the expansion is a success. Finally, just a quick touch back in 2022, 23, Kelsey Moore, our transportation specialist or transportation options specialist, uh, conducted a bunch of public outreach and briefly the input received via the in-person surveys indicated a strong support for bike share with a preference for bike share operating in and nearby the downtown core. The in-person surveys showed of the 91 people who provided a response to the survey, 76% were familiar with Eugene's bike share system and 86% of the people indicated they were interested in seeing bike share operate in Springfield. Uh, in addition to that, she conducted a downtown business outreach as well as property owner outreach and 13 business downtown business owners signed a letter of support for bike share. Uh, several property owners, including Al Patel, hotel owners off of Franklin, David Loveall, who owns, I believe is 1% of downtown, signed a letter of support as well as Willamah Lane. Uh, and lastly, this last year, fall of 2023, staff conducted a, a survey at, uh, the Springfield History Museums, Bright Night, back in October. Uh, and like the initial survey, staff surveyed 64 people and 80, 80% were familiar with Eugene's bike share program and 95% interested in seeing bike share operate in Springfield. In addition, staff specifically asked the 64 individuals if they supported allocated public funding for bike share in Springfield, and that number dropped from 95% to 89% in support. So tonight, the request is to direct staff to work with Cascadia Mobility to expand Peace Health Rides into downtown Springfield in 2024 for a three-year pilot expansion, uh, direct staff to provide 16,558 to fund Springfield's share for a one year of operation. And finally, direct staff to return in year three of the program to measure its success and have an ongoing conversation. Thank you. And I'm available for questions as well as Tom Schwetz for, from LTD.
Well, thanks. Thank you. And thanks, Tom, for joining us. Any questions?
Yeah.
Jill, and then we'll work our way down this way.
So I've got three areas of concern that I would like to get some more knowledge in or get some more information on. Um, number one is that the Springfield share I know is not coming out of general fund. It's been identified from other funds. And that's fine. Cause I don't want to see general tax dollars go into this program. Secondly, though, it concerns me that although we have a nod from LTD, but we don't have a yes from LTD. That's a little concerning, but most concerning to me is I look at these numbers and it shows a loss of $300,000 to the program. And Springfield, Eugene adds another 100 bikes to the program, which would, I think commensurately increase loss. Cause it's getting bigger. And I would like to know why the loss, how come it's not, how come it can't self-fund? And is there any controls next year? So if we have a $300,000 loss this year, this coming year, what's to say it's not 600,000 the following year? And those numbers will keep climbing. Is there, there's no, doesn't seem to have any. At least I haven't been able to identify any checks and balances in regards to these year, these are the guidelines and these are hard noses beyond this point. So I'm very concerned about that. And the third one is starting to escape me already because I got wrapped up in the second one. So I'll think of it and hit them up second.
Okay. Uh, so the first, the identified funding, um, is within my transportation planning budget. Uh, there is savings, one from the vacant senior transportation position now filled. Thank you very much for that. Uh, and two contractual services, I have a line item of about $70,000 for programs and ongoing planning efforts. And so there is 70,000 planned in this existing budget. It wouldn't be taking from any other program or anything else. It's planned for these types of events. Two was LTD's role, and I would let Tom speak to that more a little bit.
Hey, Tom, Tom, do you want to, I want to for a second. So when, when Drew punts here, I know that you're available. We're going to put you on the spot. Good to see you.
Good to be here.
Um, and three, remind me of what three was again, I apologize. Oh, that it was the, the funding, the funding shortfall.
Right. What kind of caps do we have in place? And why is it, where is it a shortfall? And is that a management issue? And why is it a management issue? Now, how can it get worse?
So Brody could probably answer this better. He's the, the director of Cascadia Mobility, but bike shirt in its essence is a, a transportation option, and it is not something that is standalone, something that can self-fund. They have tried that method and it has failed in multiple cities. Um, it's just an ongoing issue of providing transportation options such as transit. I mean, any sort of transit is that it's a low cost option for citizens to, to use. And it's a program that is generally funded by federal dollars, local dollars. In this case, peace health is a sponsor. Uh, there is rider revenues. University of Oregon is putting in a significant amount of money, but even with those, it's just a, it's kind of the nature of bike share that is kind of always looking for funding, additional funding.
Always going to cost the taxpayers.
It is always looking for additional funding.
Costs a taxpayer.
Okay. And Tom, you want to jump in here?
Yeah. So I'd like to just jump onto what, uh, what you're saying here in terms of, of thinking about public transit or public transportation in a broader sense. Uh, you may be familiar with the story of why the US government supports public transit across this country. Uh, but if you're not very quickly, uh, the private sector was operating for decades, uh, couldn't make any money out of it. And in the late sixties, the, um, actually the 1964 Congress passed the Urban Mass Transit Act, uh, providing, um, heavy subsidies to public transit across the country. And that's, that's how public transportation has operated since then. Um, and so like, like LTD services, um, uh, bike share also is that kind of transportation. And so in some respects, that's in part, you know, it's, it's another form of shared mobility. Uh, it's something that, that we know how to manage. Uh, but I'll tell you, we, we are not making a profit. And it's just not the way it, it works. It's a subsidized transportation source or system uh, to get people, uh, the transportation that they need.
And do you have any comments about the question specifically to, um, to the LTD portion of it?
Oh, uh, yeah. I mean, we're, we're just in the, in the middle of our process. Uh, again, as, as he mentioned, reimagine the ride is the, the, the term, term of, uh, for that process. And in that, we're looking at a wide range of things. First of all, the, the board passed a, a policy back in May uh, that was around mobility. Um, uh, basically it was a mobility management policy. Uh, and it laid out kind of some, some fairly, uh, specific things that, that we, uh, would go through as a process to determine kind of what, what, uh, we're going to pursue in this broader, uh, form of mobility. And, uh, based on that, uh, we're undergoing a broader, uh, range of, of planning that's intended to be completed, uh, in time to inform the, uh, Eugene Springfield uh, and the, and the regional, uh, uh, climate-friendly equitable communities process. So, uh, in that process, um, we're conducting right now a conference of operations analysis. Uh, we are about to adopt what's called the Community Outreach Communications Assessment Recommendations to improve our public engagement. Uh, I should say, we're going to ask the board to adopt. Um, I shouldn't say that we're going to adopt. Uh, and then we've also got a broader mobility management framework. Part of it, if you can, uh, imagine, uh, we're a transit organization. Most of our people are oriented to putting the buses out every day, uh, safely and effectively. Mobility management is a broader frame. And so that mobility management framework is just helping us evolve uh, and take the steps we need to, to take this on. And then finally, all that's going to feed into our long-range mobility plan. So with respect to, um, a nod, not a yes today, uh, we really want to do this. We want to finish our process first. Um, and that's going to lead us to, I think, and have the board more, uh, easily, uh, say, yes, let's, this is what we're going to do. Um, and that's, that's where we're at today.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Um, yeah, if we can have you back up if you, if there's more questions for LTD. Appreciate it. Steve.
I'm fully supportive of any way we can get more people out of vehicles. I drive a car. Are you going to get me out of one? But that's, that's the future. That's what we have to do. And so I support whatever we can do that. In Springfield, I want to be able to come up with something that supports itself some way. Anyway, it's hard to do, but we need to, need to work in that way. A couple of questions I had, the last time presentation, we talked about that $600,000 grant from the federal government, City of Eugene. And I was looking around, saying, did Springfield apply for anything like that? Did Springfield, what happened there? I don't have to answer that yet. And, uh, so that, that's been on my mind since then. And then I look at this, uh, budget you have here, uh, the $281,000 dollars from Eugene's contribution. Is that some of those federal funds that received?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, uh, that's important to know. And anyway, I support you guys.
Uh, so to your first question, uh, the $600,000 that Eugene received, we requested funding for Mill Street to, to shore up the Mill Street reconstruction project. So we got money from the redistribution funds at the same time that Eugene got 600,000 for the bike share expansion.
I, I believe we looked under every couch for every penny to get Mill Street to the finish line.
We absolutely did.
All right. Corey.
Thank you. Um, I also have been supportive of this since it's been the get-go. I was, I was in at 100. Um, and I, what I, what I, but what I want to say is that I really appreciate the creativity and, um, reaching out to the partners and just regionally how supportive people are of this, um, and trying to like include us in that regional work. Um, and I know in conversations that I had with different folks, it was like, can we get to a right size to get this started so that we can see how successful it is? Um, and I do think that 25 is a good beginning number. Um, I was already like, let's have rules so people can get to Gateway and get to the places, but we have to get started and you can tell that we're not all in alignment here, but I just really wanted to call out that like digging in, reaching out, having the conversations with people and asking them specifically about, um, how they felt about tax many. It sounds like people were overwhelmingly supportive of that. So I appreciate the extra work that everyone has done to keep this alive and to, to get it to a place where we can continue to push forward. So thank you.
All right, Nancy.
I just wanted to, um, briefly comment. I've spoken to Jameson Otten, who is the, um, executive director for LTD. Uh, we have an excellent relationship with LTD and the city and, um, I think of, although Jameson certainly can't speak on behalf of his board, nor can he predict what a, a future decision would be. Um, he did say that, you know, any way that LTD could be supportive in this, in this way that he would, he would try to support that as staff. So he was letting me know staff person to staff person. That's something that would be a priority for him because, uh, he wants to be a good partner with our city. Um, and I guess I would just encourage you to maybe consider also not just, you know, taking away the, the overall program, but um, you know, we, staff did scale back. I, I think, you know, the first run I can, this council was probably a little bit too ambitious. Um, so perhaps thinking of this in a, in a pilot project kind of respect, but also to think about the overall wellness of the, of the community. Um, obesity is a real epidemic in America and the more we can be active, um, that will help us as, as a community to keep healthy and stay in our own homes and live independently. So, you know, I think about that because we have two hospitals in our community and the, you know, uh, more we can stay well and healthy, the, to the better. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? Michelle.
Yeah, I would just also like to add my thanks for, um, all the work that's gone into mitigating council's concerns. Um, I know you've worked really hard at it and, and I see a lot of really good, you know, information that helps me think about this in a different way than I did last time we talked about it. Um, I also want to really thank LTD and the City of Eugene for engaging in the conversations and looking way, for ways to help, you know, bridge those gaps that we were talking or having concerns about. Um, Tom, I do have a question for you. So as we consider LTD's support of this, which I feel fairly confident in saying, I, I don't see that that's an issue. What kind of a timing do you anticipate for the process? Like just a guesstimate to be, or, or can we just get to the board and say just generally does the board support? You know, the next two years.
Let me describe two scenarios. And in, in that scenario, um, we may not be finished with the, the reimagine the ride process. Um, in the next year, say, it's probably going to take like 18 months to get to the finish line. But, um, uh, what I would say is that we, we can certainly find a way to support uh, what the city's trying to do. Um, maybe after year one, I guess that's the funny you have. Um, and, and I think we're, we're looking at how we can, you know, provide, uh, a source of funding for even a, a larger system than, than just downtown Springfield. So that's something that we have to figure out. Um, uh, we're looking at, uh, perhaps stiff funding, um, additional ODOT funding, you know, basically it's going to look kind of like our budget looks in terms of all the various forces, uh, sources of funding.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Victoria.
Thank you. And I may, I may already know the answer to this, but it sounds like what you're talking about is two-wheeled bikes. So if we're talking about mobility, are there any three-wheeled bikes for people who can't ride a two-wheel bike? Because I would think those are folks that would be needing something like that. So.
Um, currently, no. Uh, I, I do participate in a, a regional shared mobility working group. Um, and, and no, we're, we're, most of the conversation has been two-wheeled bikes. And with the exodus of the scooter, we are looking more at electrifying the bicycle fleet itself and not necessarily going back to a scooter type thing, but the, the three-wheeled, I don't believe there has been any conversation about that yet, but that's, that's a good recommendation for sure.
Just to be clear, we're not interested in scooters.
Yes, I am. Yep.
Okay. Couple of, a, a couple of questions. So right now, and I think I saw this in the packet, if somebody uses a bike and comes to downtown Springfield to have biscuits in the morning at Cascade Biscuit Kitchen, like what's the charge for them to come over here?
Right. Uh, so ending a trip outside of a service area is a $25 fee. Um, and so there is data that shows that there's anywhere from 50 to 75 trips during like summer months through Springfield, but those trips cannot stop here without being charged $25.
You want to ask?
Do we have data on the socioeconomic position of the users of this system?
That is an excellent question.
I would love to know if it's actually working for the, um, folks that are being targeted. And if not, then why are we subsidizing a system that folks can afford to do something on their own?
So I know, I know the Cascadian Mobility did get a grant, um, to lower the cost for socioeconomic disadvantaged. And so the, the fee has gone down for those that qualify. Um, but I don't have that data in front of me. I, I don't know how many are, are writing it.
So, um, in this broader expansion, the, like in the map you provided us, it was for downtown Springfield, right? So is, and but the Patels came up and their hotels are in Clintwood. And could you talk maybe a little bit more like, or I think the Patels are getting, um, one of these part of the bike share, right?
Uh, I know that there has been a conversation about putting a bike share hub at their hotels. I don't know where that is in the process.
Okay. I'm supportive. Um, I think this is right. Like, I think this helps us on a couple of, on a couple of elements. When we got businesses downtown saying this helps them do business, that's a good thing. And making it easier for people to get to Springfield and spend money is a good thing. I'm interested obviously in this BMT question. You know, I know we're not going to have an answer. We've told the state for 24 months, right? That they didn't have their stuff together when it comes to CFAC and this continues to illustrate the reason why. But if this is going to help us sort of buy down, you know, um, something in the broader regulatory framework, right? That, that, that does nothing but help us. Um, when it comes, I think there's good feedback and maybe we can get the rest of these questions answered when you get back with Cascade Mobility, um, and send it to us in a memo. Um, I think the, the questions about mo- uh, mobility and bikes is good. I also think the, um, uh, the, when we come to metrics, right? Like we, we gotta, we gotta see a report back sooner than like two years from now, right? Like, you know, if we can have a check in and, and like a year, that would make sense to me. The other thing that I think would be really helpful in how we measure the program would be the operating fund gap, right? Because I think what if, you know, what Brody's going to tell me is that that roughly that same operating gap is pretty consistent through the history of the program. But if we can just like, if we talk about, you know, trips that end here, we talk, you know, and finds a, find a third thing. And then the operating fund gap, right? That will, that will help us sort of understand and measure this program appropriately.
Yes, I can certainly do those things. Okay.
Other questions? Um, also like we gave you guys pretty good feedback the last time around and, you know, to go back out and find a lot of additional funds that aren't relying on the City of Springfield. I definitely appreciate it. Do you have enough direction?
Uh, I believe so. I mean, is that a a yes on let's work with Cascadia Mobility then?
I'm seeing yet, well, I'm not seeing 100% of yeses. Let's, right. But I'm seeing enough yeses to go around. Go forward.
Yes, I believe that I have enough and I will report back. Yes, I believe that I have enough, and I will report back in a year.
All right.
And, and well, memo.
We're gonna hear about it, uh, or, or we're gonna hear about it sooner than that.
Yeah, we will. Yes.
Well, there is, we are giving some sort of direction at some point. There's, it's gonna come back to a vote.
Work session.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The easier of the two topics.
Well, master fees and charge annual adjustment. You notice how all the bike folks are like, we're out of here? Nobody wants to stick around for your item. Hi, Nate.
Hello, uh, good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, I'm here tonight to discuss the master fees and charges annual update. Um, this is never an easy conversation to have. Uh, no one likes to raise fees. And, um, this is an eighty-page document with a pretty broad range of fee types, and there is no perfect escalator for all of these fees. Um, I'm hoping to give you a little bit of context this evening, maybe to make the conversation a little bit easier. Um, I'm seeking guidance, um, at the end of this conversation on a percentage escalator, uh, that we'll then take to this document. Uh, it won't be applied unilaterally, just black and white across all the fees. Uh, it doesn't make sense to do it that way. Some of the fees are so small that we'll leave them as they are. We'll look at each of those fees and just use common sense as we apply them. Um, this is also just guidance. Uh, there's no formal decision being made this evening. Uh, this document's gonna be coming back to you redlined with our adjustments on April eighth in the work session. Um, so this percentage won't be applied to all the fees in this document. Uh, let's start with, uh, the planning fees. Um, Portland State University just conducted a study in collaboration with our community, uh, development, uh, department. And, um, the community development director, Jeff Paschal, will be bringing that conversation back to you in a work session in the spring, seeking guidance for the planning fees. So we won't apply this to the planning fees. Uh, it also is not applied to the SDCs. Uh, the SDCs, we have an STC, uh, methodology that's been adopted, uh, by a resolution that calls for annual increases based on the engineering news record CPI. Uh, that CPI, uh, from January twenty twenty-four is two-point-six percent, and that's the percentage that'll be applied to the SDCs. Uh, utility rates. Staff will be bringing utility rates in front of you in a work session, uh, in the coming months. Uh, and so this won't influence those rates, uh, and then Santa Pac. If Santa Pac, uh, requests an increase, we'll also bring that, uh, to you in a work session. What this will influence are our business license fees, um, our building, um, permit fees, um, fire and life safety, uh, the transport fees, as well as the fire marshal office, uh, fees, um, police fees, court fees, and library fees. Uh, so back in, uh, February of two thousand nineteen, you know, it's, again, we've got, uh, eighty pages and a pretty broad range of different fee types. We're always looking for a, a simplified way to approach this. And so, uh, back in a work session, we decided that we would use the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, CPIU, uh, Western Region Size, uh, Class BC, uh, as our CPI for applying it against this master fees and charges schedule. Uh, that made a lot of sense because we had, uh, a couple decades of low inflation, uh, and then we had the pandemic and high inflation. Um, included in the, uh, CBM, I included a, uh, chart that shows the last four years of CPI and then the rate uh, percentage escalator that, that you decided on. Uh, we, uh, experienced two high years, uh, in twenty-three, it was, uh, eight percent, um, CPI, and you decided to go with the five percent escalator. In twenty-four, it was a six percent CPI, uh, and, uh, and the work session last year, you asked if there was an alternative escalator that would be more applicable to these, uh, fees. Uh, we gave you an, an alternative. It's not a perfect one again, but it was the growth in our labor rate. That came in at four-point-four percent last year, and that's the one you decided to go with. Uh, this year, we've provided both rates again. Um, the CPIU is three-point-three percent. The growth in our labor cost is five percent. And so I'm looking to you for guidance, uh, and we could do, uh, one or the other, something altogether different, or potentially a hybrid, uh, if it's a fee that's based more on reimbursing staff time versus just a general generic type fee. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a conversation and questions.
Questions? Joe? So Nate, on the, um, fees that we charged, for example, and I'm not sure if I've even got the right set of fees we're talking about, so correct me if I'm wrong. Um, when it comes to, for example, the STC fees, that is basically a re- uh, collecting money to cover infrastructure and increasing infrastructure costs and, and construction, correct?
Um, I believe it's both buying into the system, uh, so reimbursement as well as, uh, future, um, uh, expansion of the system.
Right, so if we got a development of paying SDCs and, and we were punching out sewer lines or, you know, tr- streetlights, et cetera, that helps cover that. So I like the, trying to get in, in line with actual current construction cost increase. That makes a lot of sense because if we have to do the work, then we have to be able, afford to be able to do it. I'm not too excited about increasing, uh, building permit fees. Cause if we're collecting SDCs and, and what would be the, how would we justify the increase in the building permits unless we had a additional cost in staff, but staff costs more.
Uh, and Jeff's here this evening, uh, to answer questions if you wanna get down into the, um, weeds.
A little bit into the weeds, but I just.
My understanding is the building permit fees are typically, uh, to reimburse us for the cost of the, um, um,
The time.
Time that we spend on those particular, the inspections.
Right, so I do, I mean, it's, whatever we got, that mean as far as it's close, coming close to capturing what it, it costs us because I'm not one for having somebody that's building something, even though I'm pro-business, pro, pro-construction, but I'm not into having the rest of the citizens pay for someone else's project, which could be in profit for that project man, or the project owner. But I am wanting to make sure that our costs for increasing or developing our assist, our infrastructure is covered.
Uh, so councillor, I think, so to separate, so SDCs are different than the building permit. We just collect them at the building, per, issue of the building permit. Um, for the building permit fees, to remind council, we didn't increase our building permit fees last year, our application fees, because, um, we, we were sitting on reserves and we decided to tap into the reserves to cover, uh, any sort of cost last year. So the recommendation when I met with Nate was looking at this year that we probably shouldn't forego another year without raising our fees so that we don't wanna put ourselves in, in a situation where we're either depleting our reserves or we're, um, running short. The other issue is, is looking at future budgets and strategically planning with as busy as our department is, is looking at potentially needing to add some building inspectors to start, um, secession planning because we have a couple that are do, near retirement and a couple that may be difficult to replace, such as an electrical um, building inspector that, that are very, um, specialized. And so just thinking ahead that we may be coming to the council in future budgets and the budget committee to look at how we succession plan and add staff to keep up with it, the number, the, the work. So I, I think it's prudent to, we, last year, we took a pause. I think it's prudent to at least look at some sort of increase this year to keep ourselves in, um, good financial health.
See, I don't, I don't have much angst over that, but, and I'm gonna throw you a, a slider, uh, technology fee. Are we still collecting that? What, where are we sitting with that? And is there any pot of money, so to speak, to help mitigate some of these contemplations of increasing the other fees?
So we do still collect the tech fee, the technology fee, and we are utilizing the technology fee. Um, some of that presentation you saw on the Development Center and all of that activity and adding that where it's like that the developers and the, anybody in the community can go and see information on that, that hub. That, that was technology fee. The other thing is, is going through our, after the conversation I had with the council last year on the technology fee, is going through our personnel and looking and saying, what, what makes sense? Are there personnel positions that directly relate to utilizing that technology and assisting developers? Does it make sense to kind of move them into the technology fee and use some of that to offset some of these costs? Yes, we are going through that process. It's just a, an iterative process to make sure that we're staying true to where the council was when we met last fall about making sure that that tech fee was really dedicated to folks who were in that business and, and working through that and, and utilizing that software, helping the folks who are utilizing that, those tools.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, before, before we take other questions, so just, could you clarify one point? And we can use the building fees if that's, that would be helpful. The year-to-year in the budget, it's gonna cost us, is it gonna cost us more or less or the same to deliver the same hour worth of work?
It's gonna cost us more.
And that's the five percent number that's in the.
That's the five percent.
Okay.
So, um, a lot of our, um, labor contracts were bargained prior to the pandemic and the inflation that we experienced is just now coming into our budget. Uh, the first one came in this year, um, that was the, uh, police or spa contract. Um, we are, uh, implementing, um, a SEIU and non-union compensation plan. The study is out right now. That's already been bargained, and then we're going back into bargaining with those groups as well as IFF. So that inflation is now finding its way, and we have that built into our forecasts.
Right, and, and, okay. Uh, other questions? Victoria?
So the only thing I'll say is I understand that fees have to go up. I just think that it's hard to explain to people who are not getting a three to five percent increase in their pay, and they're paying fifteen to twenty percent more for their groceries to have to try to explain to them why we're increasing our fees. Five percent is a lot. Um, and I, and I understand too, again, we, you know, it's holding off last year. Um, so it's just something that we hopefully are able to with the, with providing a, a, a quality service, uh, uh, you know, a more efficient service and that type of thing. We can justify those costs in the service that we're providing for that, for that product. So just, I know, times are hard all over. So.
Okay, so we gotta get to a number where we're directing them on something to come back with. All right, so the, is the escalator four and a half percent or five percent?
Well, I gave you two. Uh, the, um, BLS CPIU, uh, Western Regions.
Right.
Of, that is three-point-three, and then the growth in labor is five percent. We could do one, uh, the other, or we could do a hybrid potentially where we look at each of these and decide, is this one that is more labor-driven? Or is this just more of a generic fee? Um, and then you also have an opportunity, for instance, like with building permit fees. Uh, when we come back with the red line, you can look at categories and decide you wanna do something different once you look at those numbers.
Yeah, so could, so we could give you a range saying we're comfortable with three to five percent, let you mark it up, and then sort of examine the work, if you will.
Yes, we take that guidance, and then we take this document and send it out to all the groups that have ownership in it, which is pretty much all the departments. And it's just not, again, implied unilaterally. We have conversations and we kind of massage and do what seems reasonable and makes sense.
I think I'm, like, I think I'm comfortable with giving you the, or, the three to five percent range and letting you judge, like, if it's a sort of labor-intensive activity, right, then, you know, maybe it's on the upper end. If it's a non-labor-intensive a- activity where we've made other investments, right, to try to keep it down on the three percent range. People, good with that?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we thought we were gonna need all thirty minutes for the, uh, for the fee schedule. That is the last item for the evening, so we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.